...healthy relationships and teaching them how to take care of themselves in a positive way.
Is there anything as a parent we should look at and think, "There's a trigger there"? I mean, if you see this with your children, should you sit down and have a talk? What would be the specific symptom or trigger for you?
I'd look at isolation.
Exactly.
I'd look at isolation and dropping grades, not wanting to see their friends anymore, constant phone calls from the boyfriend.
Things that perhaps somebody thinks cute?
Yes.
Cute, but you know are very atypical for your daughter especially. Or, if it's your son, the obsession with the girlfriend, because it's always over the top. It's always over the top.
Oh, but he only put his hand through the wall one time.
But see, the thing is, is that the brain cannot determine whether it's a wall or a person, and eventually they'll start hitting the person.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add very quickly in our remaining moments?
It's a very serious problem. There's no amount that we should tolerate. Shame on us for allowing any of this to go on at any time in our city. And I hope all of us, anyone who's listening today will take up the challenge and help prevent it in their own family and anywhere else in their neighborhood that they know about and speak up about violence in our families.
And I think also that the choices are hard. Getting out of a violent relationship is hard, and there is danger. The danger increases to a battered woman by 75% when she makes a decision to leave the abuser. However, she doesn't have to be alone. We can help.
And that's what you guys can do.
The choices are hard, but being able to wake up in the morning and not being afraid is a gift that just keeps on giving.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We're out of time for the program right now, but we'll be providing even more information in another edition of this program. Once again, if you need help or information, call the National Domestic Violence Hotline. The phone number you see on the screen there, 800-799-SAFE. Once again, 800-799-SAFE. But again, if you are in a life-threatening emergency, don't delay. Call 911 immediately. Remember, there is no excuse for domestic violence in Los Angeles or anywhere else for that matter. I want to thank the city attorney, Rocky Delgadoio, council president Eric Garcetti, and DART team members Gail Pincus and Bernita Walker for helping me to bring you up to date on domestic violence in the city of Los Angeles. I'm Colleen Williams. Thanks for watching.
I tell myself, ignoring, "You know what? If I touch one person's life in this year, it will be worth it." I know that one person will be safe, will feel alive, and not be afraid to wake up every morning.
In my mind, being a piece of the puzzle to make life better for them, for making life better for their children, it's just wonderful.
My name is Enrique Hurtado, Executive Director for the Aztec Firefield Crew. As a director and a trainer for the Aztec Firefield Crew, we go out and recruit young men and women from throughout the city and prepare them to become wildland firefighters. These young men and women need an opportunity and somebody to give them a chance to get a meaningful career, and with us, they come and we get them prepared mentally, physically, to become wildland firefighters, and we partner with the United States Forest Service for that. When these individuals get certified as wildland firefighters, they get deployed throughout the United States to fight wildland fires. My experience as a firefighter, when I started fighting fire, I went on and became the crew leader and came back to the city and started recruiting. I wanted to teach what I have learned in the forest. And throughout 10 years, I've been recruiting individuals, men and women, to become wildland firefighters. And it is so rewarding when these kids go out there and become wildland firefighters and just watching them do the job out there in the forest, and they change their mentality. Out here in the city, it's a little bit different. Over there, they're disciplined and structured, professional firefighters. I grew up in Los Angeles, and I think economics plays a big part, you know, with all the violence and kids, you know, just following the wrong footsteps. I want to give back to the community and give an opportunity to everyone that wants a chance and become somebody, a hero as a firefighter. I want to prepare them to be successful in life. Enrique Hurtado, y soy una cara de Los Angeles.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.[362.31]
Mr. Reyes is now here, so with that, let's go ahead and please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Lavange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Vice President Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Well, this council session is officially in session. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Parks moves, Mr. Smith seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. Next order of business.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute for today.
Mr. Weezer, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our salute to the flag?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Please put your hand over your heart. Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next order of business, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's hold on that and go through the agenda first, please.
Items one through seven are street lighting district items. Notice for public hearing.
All right. Items one through seven, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call any of those special? If not, we'll go ahead and take those up. I think we have to take those up individually, so let's go ahead and take up item one. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And item two. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Item three. Please prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item four. Please tabulate the—sorry, open the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Number five, I believe, Ron. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item six. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And number seven. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please, Mr. Clerk.
Items eight through eighteen are street lighting district items. Notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and ordinances to January 29th.
Is there any objection to continuing the ordinances—open the hearings and continuing those ordinances till the 29th? Seeing none, we will go ahead and do that on those items. Next item, please.
Item nineteen is the Wilshire Center Business Improvement District item. Notice for public hearing.
Item nineteen is before us. Anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead then and open the roll on nineteen, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items twenty through thirty-eight are items which public hearings have been held. Item twenty is a commission appointment. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk, then. Next item, please.
That would leave twenty-one through thirty-eight, and I believe on twenty-one, Mr. Zine and Mr. Parks need to recuse themselves.
Okay.
Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold that on the desk, and we'll take that up at the end for the recusal vote. That leaves us twenty-two through thirty-eight, colleagues. Anybody wishing to call special twenty-two through thirty-eight? Going once. Twenty-two through thirty-eight, colleagues. Any special items? If not, do we need to do those one at a time again?
No.
Okay, please open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items thirty-nine through sixty-seven are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, and do we have cards on any of those?
There are cards on item thirty-nine, forty-three, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-one, and sixty-five.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. Anybody wishing to call other specials? Mr. Reyes.
Forty-two, I have an amending motion that's coming forward.
Okay, we'll hold that on the table for Mr. Reyes while that circulates. Mr. Weezer? Which one, seventy-six?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, sorry. That will be for Mr. Weezer. Mr. Alacon, do you want—have a special?
Item forty-six. You got it.
Okay, got you. All right, any other specials, colleagues? If not, let's go ahead—oh, yes, Ms. Gruel.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two. All right, for Ms. Gruel. If there's no other specials, colleagues, let's go ahead and take the balance of the items. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next order of business—I believe, Mr. Alacon, you wanted one of them out of order. Which was the number?
Item forty-six.
Okay, without objection, right before public comment. Due to time constraints, we will take that one up. So item forty-six, and we have cards from the public. Do you want to take those first, or would you like to make some introductory comments? Okay. Item forty-six, Matt Dowd, if you'd like to come forward, please. Good morning.
Thank you, Council President, Matt Dowd. Wishes everyone a Happy New Year. We're back. Two thousand and eight. This one caught my eye. I like this, surprisingly enough, and because we're acknowledging poverty, this is a good one. That's the first step in any kind of illness, and it's a social illness. You don't have to look far from Los Angeles City Hall and downtown Los Angeles Skid Row. And that's just the beginning. It goes all the way to Venice Beach and all the way up and down the state, so I'm in favor of this one, and I'd like a unanimous vote for this resolution from the city of Los Angeles. Matt Dowd, Channel 35. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. That'll close our public comment on this item. And Mr. Alacon. The floor is yours, Mr. Alacon.
Yes, Members, AB 56 is a member that would establish—is a legislative action carried by Fiona Ma that would create, in California law, the position of Secretary on ending poverty at the cabinet-level position for the governor. I introduced this bill a couple of years ago, actually in the same session as the legislature is convening now. And in fact, in just a couple of hours, the bill will be heard by a committee in the legislature, and my intent is to go up there and testify on its behalf. The purpose of establishing this is to not suggest that ending poverty is a simple solution, but that the decisions that are rendered by the governor and by the state of California keep a close eye—have the opportunity to have a close eye on the issues of poverty on all considerations. This position would be advisory to the governor, and therefore, it should not result in conflicts in the cabinet. It certainly wouldn't. But it would give this person the responsibility to report to the governor on all aspects of poverty and all aspects of legislative decisions and gubernatorial decisions that could have an impact on poverty. One of the key issues related to poverty is that we—the federal poverty guidelines do not equate with the reality of poverty in Los Angeles. The formula for federal poverty guidelines is inappropriate, and it essentially says that a family of four in Los Angeles that makes more than $21,000 a year is not poor. And you know that in order for a family of four to survive in Los Angeles, they have to make, on average, about $54,000 to $70,000 to just have the bare bones survival, basic necessities, not even owning a home, for example. But that's what it would take for a family of four to survive. Because of that, we are being very inefficient in how we are expending dollars related to poverty. One of the purposes of establishing this cabinet-level position is to keep a close eye on balancing out the issues of the inappropriate federal poverty guidelines and the fact that we need to be more efficient and effective with how we spend our dollars in government. And I believe that this position will help any governor, whether Republican or Democrat, do a better job of addressing issues from the issue of poverty. So I would ask for your aye vote, so that I could take a message immediately that this city council supports it, and that the mayor will have the opportunity to consider it shortly. I ask for your aye vote to hopefully embrace in your own hearts the notion that someday we actually could end poverty.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? If not, Madam Clerk, will you please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved, and we'll send that forth with, without objection.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alacon. And that will take us back to general public comment to start out the new year. And our town crier is our first speaker. Don Garza, if you'd like to come forward. A very Happy New Year to you. After that, we'll go out to the Valley for Donna Perman.
Oh, yea! Oh, yea! Oh, yea! Since I only have one minute and fifty-one seconds, I will say Happy New Year to the city of Los Angeles. Having been in the Midwest, in the heartland of America, I bring greetings from a town choir competition I attended back in November. Of course, being liberal here in the state of California, I would like to blame the fact that I came in fifth place after tying. Of course, I could not win. But I placed fifth, so I think that's pretty good. I do bring some gifts from the fire chief from Miami Township. I guess they didn't—I didn't tell them how many council people we had, and the mayor, and all that. But I want to make sure that Jose Weezer gets his cap. I want to make sure Jan Perry gets her cap. And of course, the President—I did mention your name after the mayor when I brought greetings. And there's two left, so if you guys want to fight over it, it's up to you, whatever y'all want to do. I'd love to see—I'd like to throw it out and see if y'all fight over it.
Mr. Zine is quite a collector. I'll just throw that out there.
Actually, Mr. Zine came out to Central City East, and he already has his. You—I apologize, didn't give you one at the time. Ladies and gentlemen, God bless this great city of the angels. God bless this great country. God bless our city council, our county, and God bless these, the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Garza, and congratulations. We know that fifth place is just the beginning. Donna Perman will be our next speaker out in Van Nuys, and after that is Miriam Fogler. Happy New Year and good morning.
Happy New Year. Anyway, I'm Donna Perman. I had to defend the city employees. Daily News calls the city employees bureaucratic employees. Now Prop—oh, city bureaucrats. Now Prop S is coming up, the phony phone tax. Now you ask the city employees, they have $270 million. The contract only said $25 million. That's crazy. With the city council accepting big raises for themselves and spending money like crazy, you should save $245 million. I don't—or two—no, but $25 is the other one. I don't know why Daily News want to take away much-needed raises from city employees, hard-working, middle-class employees with families to take care of. Why doesn't the Daily News not accept any raises to save money? The city council shouldn't accept any raises. Daily News should talk about the city council with their wasteful spending and big raises. Huge CRA projects done in North Hollywood and Canoga Park ruining nice cities. Please, folks, vote no on S. It's a farce. It's a tax increase. City council got used to this illegal tax. City employees should be responsible—city council should be responsible for getting the city out—oh, city employees shouldn't be responsible for getting the city out of its holes. Politicians should be responsible for city problems. In the meantime—and especially the city council—in the meantime, you coming with huge fee waivers while we're sleeping, while the council is playing. It's terrible how they made the city employees use—get the scapegoat and get the money to pay the Prop S win. City employees didn't have the right—if they want a Prop S to come out of their union dues, how dare you? You put your responsibility in others who get a lot less. You get vacation time. But I like a vacation time because you can't do any damage while you're out. So you have—to be responsible for the city problems. That's what you're there for. You save money. Thank you.
Thank you, and a Happy New Year to you. Miriam Fogler is our next speaker.
I hold the public and I hold you responsible for the problem with the city, the budget crisis. The people of the city of Los Angeles vote you people in office. Now they've got to vote you out. Because Prop R put you in, now you're very greedy. Oh, thank you for covering my time. The covering—the putting Prop R in, giving you an extra term, now you're putting one to put taxes on the city so that you can earmark all the property taxes for the CRA, to spend up all the property tax that should be paying for our basic services here. Your fire, your police, your trash pickup folks, sewage should not be going on the telephone tax. This is a ripoff.
Ms. Fogler, we'll hold your time. But if you can put your mouth a little further away from the microphone, we can hear you better. It's distorting a little bit. Go ahead and continue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want—I want to be able to be heard here. The phone. Anyway, the phone here is going to be adding up to your internet. We must not support this. Union members should rise up to the occasion because it says in their contract—and I should have extra few seconds. You took that away from me. The $25 million should be earmarked on their contract, not the $100 and $270 million that you're attaching that on them, and that's not right. The Daily News should not be against the middle-class workers. They're middle-class people themselves. How dare you, committing chutzpah against us. You should be against the city council, who are the ones responsible for the budget crises. They're the ones who are doing the frivolous and overspending, folks. Take a look around your city. You can see what's going on. You can write down—a go down Magnolia Boulevard, which I did. I couldn't believe the high-rise building they're being built. In North Hollywood, they're building twenty-seven-story buildings, three rows in a row. Take a look at Sunday's paper, and I'm telling you right now, we have a limit how high the buildings are here in the Valley, and you people are violating the laws. You should be accountable for all this, and you should pay for—out of your own pockets, not the city workers, nobody. This is your deal. No parcels, no taxes on the parcels.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. That'll close public comment from the Valley. We now are returned here to city council chambers. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After that is Michael Hunt.
Yes, thank you, Matt Dowd here for the Venice Outlaws. We're back in '08. But I want to first recognize the council president, Eric Garcetti, back to winter in Iowa. I saw him on TV. He was knocking on doors in the snow. Read all about it in the LA Times. And then I turned the page, and then they're talking about Matt Dowd, Mike Hunt, and Zoomadog, and it's a great article, anybody, last Friday in the LA Times. But I've got to make one correction. Joel Stein never interviewed us, by the way, for the article, so that's—you know you're famous when they're talking about you, and they never even actually talk to you. But he said we've been thrown off Venice Beach for selling stuff without a license. Hundred and eighty degrees backwards. We had licenses issued by the city of Los Angeles, but LAPD ran us off the beach because they didn't like the expressive nature of the items. But we're getting beyond that. We're moving ahead, and we're waiting patiently to settle this. So in the meantime, Matt Dowd has to decide where he's going to stand on some of these important issues coming up. And I really want to get behind Eric Garcetti and the Democratic bid to regain, you know, the administration in this country. And I want to decide where I stand on the police, LAPD having to reveal their financial records. And Prop S, the phone tax. I'm still not sure where I'm going to stand, but over the next few days, I will make a decision. But in the meantime, I want to congratulate Eric Garcetti. I'm sure Wendy Gruel was doing a great job in your absence, but there are bigger fish to fry, I'm sure, and I hope yours is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hunt. After that will be Chuck Tannen.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning. Happy New Year. I think Matt hit it the best. He explained the article. He really touched on this. My whole thing now is to raise this awareness to national attention, to get the national media out here. And that can very easily well be done with me. I can go to any newspaper in Los Angeles, be heard and be listened to. But I can't be heard and listened to in my own chamber, so get ready. I'm hiring a press department in the next week or two, so I'm taking it to another level. I want national attention on what's going on. And I think that we've been really patient enough to really understand what's going on. It's not the minorities, it's the majority that really don't really understand what's going on. So I'm going for national media attention after next week. I'm going to raise the level of consciousness and awareness in this room. And like I said, I'll be hiring a professional PR firm to help me out. And whatever I have to do—I've been doing this for two years now. I'm not going away until things are done right. Listen to me. I am not going away until things are done right. You, Mr. President, if you've got some pull on this, now's the time to use it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hunt, Chuck Tannen is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. Happy New Year. Chuck Tannen. On November the 27th, 2007, the city council approved Gary Shuffels project, the Magnolia Boulevard project, and condition number 14B was amended to read as follows. The developer agrees to pay those tenants that were still residing in seventeen of the units at the existing apartments. $2,000 for the fourteen non-qualified, $4,000 for the three qualified. On Friday, December the 21st, 2007, one of the appellantents, Marcy Duncan, spoke directly to the developer and asked him when the monies would be received. The developer replied, quote, "My first construction loan fell through, and if and when the second construction loan is funded, and when I break ground, which could take nine months, is when the monies will be paid." The fact is, the council approved this project with the condition that he paid the tenants the additional monies. It appears that the developer has changed the rules of approval with his rules and new conditions. Therefore, this matter needs to be sent back to the city planning department to have an abatement hearing under 12.271 to protect the people for noncompliance. Eric Garcetti, at one time, it would be appropriate for Eric Garcetti to introduce the motion to enforce the law, as he helped enforce the law in August of 2006 for the people, when he told the city attorney to enforce 12.95.2, which relates to the tenants living in apartments that were being converted into condos. The matter—if the city council cares about protecting the people, then enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tannen. We appreciate your comments. And Ms. Gruel?
Just to reiterate, and we shared with Mr. Tannen this morning, an email which I received the last time this was brought up, that he—that they'd indicated—they thought he would not be paying. He would. It is a condition. We will enforce that condition, just to let the public know.
Thank you for that point of clarification. That will close our general public comment. Mr. Lavange has asked for item nineteen to be reconsidered, so if there's no objection, let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And if we can take up that item—we do have two public speaker cards. Ching Chow is our first speaker.
Hello, I am.
Oh, we had a card before that, but why don't you go ahead, Mr. Taus, as long as you have the microphone?
My name is Taus. I have been in the area fifty years. I have building in the area, and you're taking our money to pay off Mr. Russell. Mr. Russell doesn't do a damn thing. I met with him. All he can take is the money from the people. Where do we take it from? You have rent control. Do you know this? Where will I pay my bills with? I want to know how to do it. You don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taus. Our next speaker is Ching Chow.
Good morning. Good morning, Councilman. Happy New Year, everybody. I'm here today on behalf of a developer that owns a lot of property here in this Business Improvement District. He owns approximately nine acres of land, including the Home Depot, the Starbucks, the McDonald's there, along Wilshire and Union, and Burlington and Sixth, along with some historical projects as well. And I represent a multitude of other landowners in the area as well. I've been asked to come here this morning to discuss this Business Improvement District because it, in fact, is a task or a levy to charge landowners for this—to levy these additional costs for the improvement of the area. The detriment, though, of this levy is that it will impact the value of all the real estate in that area. We're already heading into a recession. This additional levy affects value, and it takes away a lot of the money that would be there for tenants and create jobs and other issues in the area. The Business Improvement District, as I look over it, is to provide security for the area and other issues, but it doesn't really have a dollar-for-dollar value with the assessment that it proposes to take away from all the landowners in the area. This Business Improvement District is a—is an idea that works in theory, but in practice, it only affects—it only affects the bottom line of everybody. With recession coming, and as you just heard from this gentleman here, it's going to become tougher and tougher for people to be able to swallow these types of assessments. So please, I urge this council to vote nay on this action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chow. And Mr. Lavange?
Well, thank you very much. This Wilshire Improvement Business District, like all business improvement districts, have had a positive impact in the community. We appreciate the public comment. We also appreciate the commitment that the overwhelming majority of people have made to improve the district here. So I ask for an aye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council members who wish to be heard on item nineteen? If not, we have that recommendation before us. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item twenty is the appointment of Ms. Francille Wilson to the Commission on the Status of Women.
All right, Ms. Wilson, if you'd like to come forward. Yeah, just to the table here. Any chair of your choice. And this came through our Personnel Committee. I'd like to recognize the chair of our Personnel Committee to begin the confirmation hearings. Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Doctor, good morning.
Good morning.
Your resume is very impressive.
Thank you.
Harvard, a number of other institutions, and professor at SC.
Yes.
You're well qualified for this. If you can just explain to my colleagues and the public your desire for this and what you wish to accomplish on this commission.
Well, I'm from a family that really believes in public service, and I've been involved in women's issues for a number of years. And I would just like to continue that service on the Commission for the Status of Women.
And this commission has a lot of work—the executive director, the general manager, who came out of the mayor's office and sitting over there, ready to smile a second when we mentioned Kelly. There she goes. I know she's a smile. Has a lot of work in store. And what we see is that this commission needs to get the recognition, get the support, and make the change that needs to be changed within the process. Now, your experience in dealing—I know you're an author. You've got books that have been published, your resume, and what you've done in education to bring that to the forefront. Many of our local, lower economic areas of the city really need this type of support. Women who don't see those opportunities, women of color who don't see those opportunities, minority women don't see those opportunities. How can you, in your capacity, reach out and help inspire them to move forward and to achieve success similar to what you've achieved?
Well, I think you'll find I'm a listener and a coalition builder, and I really want to understand what the problems are and help the commission to move forward into the 21st century and make sure that all the women in the city of Los Angeles are—that their needs are represented and responded to.
And I think that your qualifications speak well for that. So I wish you well with that. I know that with your full plate of activities, this will be one more activity to accomplish. But with your desire and willingness and history of accomplishments, well suited for this particular commission. So I congratulate you and hope my colleagues will support this. And then Kelly will have another member of this commission to move forward with the agenda. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any other members wishing to be heard? Now, we want to congratulate you on the nomination, and we look forward to some great things continuing to happen at the commission. Now, there's a lot that's set in motion from CEDAW, our convention, to eliminate all forms of discrimination against women, and some of our Young Girls programs as well. So with that, let's go ahead and make this official, and open the roll, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Welcome aboard. Next item, please.
Item twenty-one is being held on the desk for recusal by Mr. Zine and Mr. Parks.
Okay. Mr. Zine, why don't you recuse yourself at this moment, and Mr. Parks, if you will, as well, for item twenty-one? And Mr. City Attorney, would you like to—
And for the record, council members, Parks and Zine are recused due to their membership in the fire and police pension plan.
All righty. Now that our pensioners are gone, let's go ahead— Now that our pensioners are gone, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved, and the staffs of Mr. Parks and Zine can invite them back in. Next item, please.
Item 39, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, Item Number 39 is next, and we have secret card, Mr. Matt Dowd. Mr. Dowd, Item 39, you're waving it? Okay. Mr. Dowd waves his card. That will close public comment. Any members wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 42 is being held on the desk for an amendment which has still not come across.
Okay, we'll hold that. Next item, please.
Item 43, call special for cards from the public.
Okay, 43, Mr. Dowd.
Sorry to hold you up. This is an important one, though, and I have to mention this because, see, we're bringing in this phone tax to cover money that the city supposedly doesn't have, but we're starting to get a little lax with these Convention Center waivers. Another one of these waiver things and...
I think Number 43 is what's before us. That's the Special Counsel Meeting to honor Ron Deaton.
Okay. 43, yes. Okay, yeah, I just want to know if this was a regular council meeting that I can attend, and I'm just wondering if this is a precedent, and we can have special counsel meetings to honor all kind of people now, but it will be good, because I want to hear all the qualifications that a former DWP, General Manager, has, so I can compare them. You know, I'm sure he's got years and years of experience, and so I'm looking forward to this meeting, and hopefully we can suggest some other council meetings, we can honor some important people, maybe the Barack Obama Council Meeting coming up soon. I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, and that, as a point of information, will be open to the public. Let's go ahead, and on 43, please close the hearing on that, and we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 47, called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Donna Pearman, out in Van Nuys, on Item 47.
Okay, my name is Donna Pearman. I see you came up with a lot of fee waivers while you were out. Fifteen fee waivers and other fee waivers after that, waiving 48, 49, 50, 51, 52, 53, which unfortunately I didn't have time to really look at, except it means more money being spent. Back to 47. The big fee waivers are performings for LA youth for $10,000, the Seventh Annual Martin Luther Bike Race on January 19 for $38,830, and the 23rd Annual Martin Luther King Junior Parade on January 21 for $38,830. Not against Martin Luther, but this is a lot of money. And the Fourth Annual Kingdom Day Gospel Festival on January 1 for $54,139. These fans cost a lot of money. In the meantime, you talk about cutbacks, making city employees have to save money, and using union dues for Proposition S, and then having this phony phone tax, saying that, yeah, vote no, which we, it's because of these fee waivers. That's why we're having trouble with the city, is that you go back and forth and you waive everything that looks nice and is feel-good measures, so you really got to cut back on these things. You have to make cutbacks, not the city employees, and this is one way where you can have it. Vote no on these fee waivers. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pearman. Ms. Fogler is next. And again, for some reason, we have some extraordinary sensitivity to the microphone out in Van Nuys, so it is distorting a little bit. If you want to make sure you speak a little bit away from the microphone, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Fogler.
Well, I'm trying to do my best, but you know, we're all human beings, and we all make mistakes, and I'm hoping that you will learn from these mistakes you're doing, that you would become, one of you will become an Ernie Bernardi, who will save the city, or a Mayor Coontain, who saved New York from bankruptcy, which is a high time we need to take the city back in its reins, and the people have to come, and they have to speak about that, because I'm only one individual that's going to vote against this Prop S, absolutely, because it's voting for taxes that have, communications that have not even been, never even been created, and you're talking about the internet here. So, folks, we don't want to tie this up and pay more money for city expenses, have lawyers have to go to court to fight for this Prop S, so please vote no on it. And of course, you cannot threaten the city workers with cutbacks, because that's not part of their contract. They were never, they never voted for this, to vote for Prop S money.
I'm sorry, Ms. Fogler.
To be earmarked for their jobs.
Focus on the special event motions.
Well, you're talking about putting these special fees, and here you want the city workers to vote for Prop S, attach it to that. Well, I'm telling you, you want to have all these fee waivers, all these different fee waivers, so you can spend the money, tax, 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 spend, spend, spend. We need a Howard Jarvis here. Enough is enough, and we had it, and we're not going to take this anymore. Need the people to vote against this. Vote against all your parcel taxes and vote down the CRA, because this is exactly what you're doing, your folks, you're taking all the money away so that you'd make the city all dependent on taxes, and then make us pay for this as pay as you go with this fee waivers. All these have to go, and you vote no on all of it. You need to vote no.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. We appreciate your public comments today. With that, let's go ahead and, yes, Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, we're in Van Nuys on Friday, correct?
No, because we missed the first week, so we'll be there. The first Friday of February.
February, okay, good. Question I wanted to ask the next time we're out in the valley, could we have the CLA give a breakdown for the last public speaker, Ms. Fogler, so that she understands the benefit of our support of these? Because I think I would like to be able to share some information with her, so if the CLA could prepare something for that public comment.
We'll work on putting that on the agenda.
Thank you.
It's a good idea.
Or just some outreach.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Labange. And with that, if there's no other council members, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. I believe we have Item 42's amendment now circulated?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. President.
And if we can go ahead then and take that up. If no one wishes to be heard, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 48, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, Mr. Dowd, Item 48.
Yeah, thank you. I touched on this already. Item 48, it's a request for an exemption from the Convention Center fee. And what I'm having a problem with is they're just coming up with language to justify these fee waivers, and as long as they put the words "serves a public purpose" in that, and then some drivel, then that makes doubt that it's a public purpose. But just making it up to be a public purpose is not a public purpose, and regardless of what it says in the Los Angeles City Council Agenda, this one says "serves a public purpose because it will provide 800 people with real estate opportunities." I mean, 800 people, that's not exactly the public interest. That sounds like selective interest, and it's a commercial event, they're selling real estate, and there's obviously commercial enterprises going on, so if we're talking about commercial vending in the city of Los Angeles, this is one, but somehow we're waiving the fee, and yet we're going to tax everybody who gets on a phone, the phone tax, every time you make a phone call, people, you're paying for the Convention Center.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Any members wishing to be heard on Item 48? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, please tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 51, called special for cards from the public.
And before that, I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas for an introduction.
Thank you very much, Council President. We have a special person in our audience today. I have next to me Mr. Jose Valle, and he is the new Vice President and General Manager of Telemundo KVEA, which otherwise known as Channel 52 here in Los Angeles, which is the first Spanish-language station to launch in high-definition in our Los Angeles market. Mr. Valle was General Manager of Telemundo 39KXTX in Dallas-Fort Worth, and there he earned them, assisted in earning them numerous prestigious industry nominations, including Emmy nominations for overall station excellence in 2004. And also, he's a native of Los Angeles, and he now lives here in Los Angeles with his wife Stephanie and their two children, Bianca and Dante. Welcome home, Jose Valle. We look forward to wonderful coverage in assisting Los Angeles and awareness of all the communities, not just the Latino community. Welcome, and thank you so much for coming back home.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. We have Item 51 before us, and Matt Dowd is Speaker. Mr. Dowd? Mr. Dowd here, going once, going twice. Okay, we'll close the public hearing on that. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can take up, next item, please.
Item 56 was called special by Councilmember Weisar, and there are cards on that now.
Okay, we have a single card. Would you like to take that first? Okay. Rob Glushon, if you'd like to come forward. On Item 56. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. Rob Glushon with the law firm of Luna and Glushon, representing the applicant. The matter that is before you is a motion by Councilman Weisar.
Hold on one second, we'll pause your time. Just want to let folks know this is a land use matter and fair hearing, for the abundance of caution, a fair hearing matter, so if all council members could please direct their attentions. Thank you.
Thank you. What's before you is a motion by Councilman Weisar, seconded by Councilman Labange, to assert jurisdiction over a land use case where the Planning Commission deadlocked 3 to 3. All that's before you is assertion of jurisdiction as a matter of process. Because of the deadlock at the Planning Commission, it's appropriate for the council to resolve that by considering the matter, sending it to Plumb Committee, and then coming back, and we'll address the merits, hopefully, when we see you again. We have other people from the project team that are here. I'm not sure everyone needs to speak, unless you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weisar?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And what we have before us, council members, is a request to do a Section 245 on this project and bring the decision of the citywide Planning Commission to the jurisdiction of the City Council. The Planning Commission voted 3-3. There was no decision as to whether to support the project or not. But let me tell you, what we have before us is a great project. It provides 180 units of new construction, lots of open space, 15% affordable housing. It will be built with LEED standards, and it is going to provide some amenities that this community desperately needs. This project is in the Arch District, in the downtown area of Los Angeles. This area is on the cusp of change to provide a community where people can live, work, and play. And what we're seeing here, actually what happened, is a project that was caught and is a victim of a proposed directive that was given by the CRA and the Planning Department that asked that certain areas of the city no longer be allowed to be converted from industrial to residential or other uses. Unfortunately, this project was caught up in that storm. I actually put in a motion today that asked that that directive given by the CRA and the Planning Department come to the council, because after all, that directive is not a directive, but a policy. The council makes policy, the Planning Department and the CRA implements that policy. So I want to hold the merits as to whether we agree or do not agree with the substance of their proposal for another day, but I'm asking you today to grant this Section 245, because after all, we don't want to hold this project hostage. That's a great project. As we deliberate and find out what we can do, this project has been in the works for a very, very long time. I hope that we could bring this project back forward, so we could have a more full discussion on the merits soon, so that we can move forward and allow this community in the Arch District to continue to blossom. Thank you very much, council members, and I ask for your a vote on this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weisar. Mr. Reyes is next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. I rise to support my colleague, Councilman Weisar. I believe the intention of this effort by the commission and the planning is one in which has a lot of value, but we also need to pause and make sure that the commissioners and the departments understand that the council members also have a vision, they have a strategy, they have a process, and when they engage their stakeholders, and that should be given just as much value. So it is beneficiary for us to just pause, let's absorb this directive, let's understand that we cannot abdicate our role as policymakers, so I welcome this opportunity, but thank Councilman Weisar for creating this placeholder, if you will, and drill down to the issues and allow our deputies, together with the commission, to look at our districts block by block. Let's understand what the council holds as a priority and move forward in a manner which we can leverage our efforts and work together as one city. So I think it's a very timely gesture. It's more than a gesture, it's a direct action in how we move our policies. So thank you, Councilman Weisar. It's something that will allow us more clarity and hopefully more predictability in how we engage not only the private sector, but the decision-makers on the public side. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just a ditto and an agreement on this, we need a pause, we need a time to take a breath of fresh air. This is the new day, this is the new year, and in a positive spirit, it is good to question and to bring before us these issues. When we talk about the merits, there'll be another discussion at another point, but I support Mr. Weisar in this motion, and thank you for your leadership in bringing it before us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. It's our last speaker from the council, so let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That item is approved, and jurisdiction is asserted over that item. Next item, please.
Item 62, called special by Councilmember Gruel.
Ms. Gruel.
Colleagues, the reason I called this special is we are having, under the direction of our President, Mr. Garcetti, and all of us, these single-topic conversations, and on that day, it's going to be on transportation. And I have submitted to all of you, I sent you a note on a survey, so that we can have a productive discussion that day about what's happening and how important it is for us to have some real conclusions that day, to be able to have an agenda that we're moving forward on. And so I'm just making a public plea. Mr. Rosendahl, you responded. Mr. Zine, you responded to this survey. I'm sure the others are in the gray mail coming, but we'd like to get them back, so I want to highlight that we sent you a survey, asking you to talk about some of the issues that are important to you as we have the single topic, and look forward to the 29th as a day in which we can really talk about the future of transportation, our strategic plan, and where we're going. And so that was just a friendly reminder to everyone to send in that survey if you've not had it or hand-deliver it to us. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
I did mine before the break, so. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And Ms. Gruel, I appreciate your leadership on this, because gridlock transportation issues is the number-one issue in the Southland. From San Diego to Santa Barbara, we're sitting there on the highway, wasting our time in gridlock. This all-day session will be extremely valuable, and not only to the residents of Los Angeles, but to the 20 million of us who live in Southern California. I'm delighted with your leadership, and as you and I've spoken, I want a segment on MAGLIF. I want to understand, as Mr. Smith knows more than I do, he dragged me over to Shanghai last year, and I looked at the form of MAGLIF there, and then, of course, I met with a group from Atlanta that are marketing business people, talking about a private-sector, public-sector relationship that just blew my socks off, and I like the whole idea of MAGLIF potentially being part of the solution. Secondly, later this week, on the 10th of January, colleagues, just across the street over at the cathedral, Denny Zane is holding an all-day seminar on where do we get our funding to make this happen? I'm going to that, because we need to come up with a half a dozen mixed-bag strategies on funding. Private sector, public sector partnerships, bond measures, maybe a gasoline tax, maybe a parcel tax, like Tom... a parcel tax like Tom Labonge has, a buck per person and this kind of thing, whatever. But we have to come up with funding mechanisms because over the next 20 years, we got to get ourselves out of this gridlock. And as Steve Hyman quoted me the other day, "I want to live long enough to get on the subway to the sea" and these other things. So this all-day session is going to be a terrific valuable opportunity for us as a city and thank you, Wendy, for what you did with this.
Thank you very much. With that, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 65 called special for cards from the public.
All right, Beth Fulton would like to come forward now. We have item 65 before us. Thank you for your patience and good morning.
Thank you. Good morning. I am here on item 65. Again, my name is Beth Fulton and this is another asserting jurisdiction issue. I was asked to come and share my personal experience. The issue at hand is a driveway location. I lived on the corner of Ben and Riverside Drive and the particular project that we are talking about is a project that actually takes up the entire block, taking up Riverside, Ben and Gentry to the east. When I lived on the corner of Ben and Riverside Drive, directly across the street from a high school, there was a tremendous traffic problem. The high school unfortunately does not have any parking, so what happens is the parents queue up every morning to drop off their children and they queue up every afternoon to pick up their kids. So what happens is there's a long line from Riverside backed up to Ben, a good block long for parents to drop off and pick up their kids. What has happened is originally, this project was set up in such a way that the driveway accessed to the building would be on Gentry Avenue. The Department of Transportation issued a recommendation that Gentry was the appropriate place for the driveway. The driveway was also approved on the initial track map to be on Gentry. The Neighborhood Council Valley Village and the Valley Village Homeowners Association all agreed that the driveway would best be served by the public for safety reasons on Gentry. Unfortunately, the South Valley Area Planning Commission rejected all of those recommendations and allowed the driveway to be moved at the last minute to Ben Avenue. It's a very dangerous decision. With the high school directly across the street, it creates a major traffic problem. Ms. Gruel has assisted us in trying to work on the traffic problem there, but it will only be aggravated if this driveway is allowed to continue to be on Ben. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much and thank you for being here. This was as well, it was a three to two vote and I'm asking to assert jurisdiction over an action by the South Valley Area Planning Commission. On its meeting of December 13th, 2007, they granted an appeal related to the issuance of a project permit compliance by the director of the City of Planning for an 18-unit townhouse condominium. As designed, access to that block-long project was from Gentry Avenue. It was, the project's design was approved by DOT showing the Gentry access, the subdivision map was approved showing access and the permit compliance was issued with access through Gentry. And the DOT strongly supported that access for safety reasons. And specifically, they state the preferred access point for this project is Gentry Avenue because there's a small private school, as mentioned, that fronts on Ben Avenue and it would be best to separate that access point away from the school. In addition, Ben has more traffic since the street extends a much longer distance than Gentry Avenue and Gentry Avenue is two blocks in length and tees into Riverside Drive. And so notwithstanding the strong opposition or strong positions from the Department of Transportation and City Planning that the safer access to the project is on Gentry, the Area Planning Commission redesigned the project and required access from Ben. So colleagues, I ask in the interest of public safety that we assert jurisdiction over this matter and send it to the Plumb Committee. Mr. Reyes co-signed this with me for their guidance in this matter to be able to keep it on the area in which the community and the developer actually agreed for it to be on Gentry. And so I would ask for an i-vote on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. With that, let's go ahead then and open the roll on asserting jurisdiction. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Jurisdiction is successfully asserted on that item and that will stay here. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, January 18th to arrive at 11:00 a.m. and for the entire meetings of February 8th and April 18th, all for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Alecon requests to be excused Friday, January 11th to arrive at noon for city business. The motion is required.
What, does that take us down to 11 or 10?
That would take you down to 10.
Okay, let's hold that for now and we'll circle back with Mr. Alecon on that.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused January 30th to leave at noon for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
Councilmember Labonge requests to be excused to leave at 12:30 on January 30th and for the entire meeting of February 1st, both for personal business. That meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Friday, January 18th to leave at noon and for the entire meeting of February 8th, both for city business. That meets council policy.
Okay, he's excused.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Tuesday, January 15th to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, he's excused.
Councilmember Reyes also requests to be excused for the second, third and fourth Wednesdays of each month in 2008 to attend the LA County Sanitation Board meetings. Those all meet council policy.
He's excused.
Councilmember Weezer requests to be excused January 22nd, February 26th, 27th, 29th and March 4th and 5th, all for personal business. That meets council policy.
He's excused.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused to arrive at 11, excuse me, Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused to leave at 11:00 a.m. on Friday, January 11th for city business. The motion is required.
What number does that take us down to as well?
That's the same as Mr. Alecon, that takes down to 10.
Okay, let's hold that on the table as well, we'll circle back with them, make sure.
And Councilmember Haun requests to be excused to arrive at 11 on January 15th for city business. That meets council policy.
Meets policy, she's excused.
And that would clear the desk except for the two excuses on the desk.
Okay. If we can carry those over to the next meeting. All right, any announcements of a business nature, committee meetings or anything?
See, a policy I'm at is we start the new year, so we clarify.
Just when we get down to a motion, which is 10 or 11, we've been having some tough meetings where some folks have been leaving without absences, so we want to make sure that we run through on those days that people are actually going to be here before we grant the numbers that will take us down to the 10th member.
But is it a violation to wish everyone a happy new year?
It would not be a violation.
And is it a violation to...
But you still have to do it.
To support the fire department in a benefit tonight at the Music Box, the 22nd Annual Elvis Presley Birthday Bash, $25 a ticket at the door, some of the greatest acts in Los Angeles.
It would be, but thank you for the information.
The Fire Memorial, Fire Memorial. So if anybody wants to come, Elvis would have been 73 today.
And, sorry, yes, Mr., oh, we have, Mr. Cardenas and then we're coming back to Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Cardenas.
Tom Labonge, just wish Los Angeles and everybody watching Happy New Year. Would it be against the rules if I added to that and said Happy New Year to everybody as well?
Yeah, it would be permissible.
Okay, Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you. And Mr. Rosendahl for a quick special presentation.
Mr. President, it's one of those things that we all go through here, colleagues. As we well know, we've become this incredible opportunity and we are blessed in the process. The incredible opportunity is to give young people an opportunity to work for us. Here we are, and those who know me, you know I'm all over the place doing a million things 100 times a day. And when I came into this job, I didn't realize that there was so much that we do and so much we get engaged in and how we're working around the clock all the time. People don't realize that. And one of the things that we need to be able to effectively do is communicate, get our messages out, get the television and the newspapers and the radios, the folks who walk around this horseshoe all day long scribbling or bringing their cameras and or writing stories, that gets our image out there, gets our talking points, gets our positions out there, you know, gets us the kind of press that is critical to connecting us to the constituents and making the democracy work. I've had this great lady for two and a half years at my right-hand side, as she is standing here right now, that has been absolutely superb. I was talking to a journalist last night where there was a little party for her and I said, "What do you like about her the most?" And he said, "Her dependability." When a press person calls one of us, you know, it goes through staff and the job of staff is to make sure you get back to that press person, no matter what the story is, and that you keep a positive, friendly relationship with the member of the press, regardless of what we're doing. And that kind of a relationship has worked for my benefit, I must tell you. Right now, people know me everywhere and they love me and all that, and I can tell you, 99% of that is because of Safia Jones, who's standing right next to me on my right. Little did I know that after a couple of years, they move on. Why do they move on? First of all, we don't pay enough around the horseshoe for our staff. I'm going to tell you that, we don't. And secondly, the talents and the skills that they learn and that they develop and that they move forward with in their lives become a great, great source of strength for the private sector. Safia is going to Atlanta, she's going to be working as an executive in public relations, community relations for a telecommunications firm. It's her first step going further in life. She is going places. I wouldn't mind seeing her someday become our president of the United States. She is awesome. She is absolutely awesome. I will always be indebted to her, I will always be with her. It's a tremendous loss. Standing around me are my staff, Mike Bonner with his arms twisted, I never want to lose this guy. I don't want to lose any of them, folks, but we know we do, especially the young ones who need to make a better living and get on with their lives than what they have here. And the older ones, I bless them for staying with me and putting up with what I do here. So Safia, on behalf of all of us, you're going to be tremendously missed but greatly appreciated.
Before you speak, a couple council members would like to add their good wishes. Mr. Labonge and then Mr. Cardenas.
I just want to thank Mr. Rosendahl, there's nothing like staff and the opportunity that you give them. And you never know where you end up. And the harder you work at these positions, and I'm looking for those who are still here, the better benefit, because I know every day I benefit from something I did 30 years ago here when John Ferraro was right there. So congratulations, good luck on your free journey endeavors.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Sophia, if you don't mind, I'd like to give you some advice and also I'd like to thank you, Bill, for recognizing why people like, when people like us electeds, nine times out of 10, it's because our staff, they like our staff. So thank you for being honest. But we do take a little credit for it because we hired them and gave them an opportunity to actually do the wonderful things that they do for our constituents. But Sophia, some advice to you, I've had some of my staff and I was very happy for them, as Mr. Rosendahl is happy for you, to see them go on to other opportunities. I've had staff go to Texas and other places. And what has happened is when they get there, they don't realize until they're there in the perspective of another city, that other cities, other municipality states and other levels of government don't come close to the sophistication that we're used to here in Los Angeles. So I want to congratulate you, but secondly, warn you, the worst problem that you're going to have is people thinking you're acting like a know-it-all. But the good thing about it is, you are a know-it-all because you are coming from a place where we do things big, we do things well, and when you put it into perspective of other communities, they're just blown away. I'll give you a simple example. One of my staff that I love very much is now in Texas and he was volunteering in a community meeting and they were wondering how they're going to communicate with the police department or what have you. And then he just raised his hand and he said, "Well, why don't we have the local police officer that has the beat in our area come to our meeting?" And their jaws dropped and they said, "Can we do that?" And he said, "Yeah, in Los Angeles, we have senior officers. It doesn't have to be a senior officer. Have we ever invited the police to come to one of our meetings to talk about our issues that we've been talking about all night?" And everybody said, "No, we've never done it." Guess what? The president of the little group called the police department, they were excited, they came with excitement wanting to talk to the community and they realized that communicating is a matter of first step. And that's something that we take for granted in Los Angeles, that we've learned how to communicate with our constituents, we've learned how to be open with our process. So you've been blessed to have this opportunity by Mr. Rosendahl, giving you an opportunity to flourish and shine like you have, yet at the same time, you're going to be a know-it-all. So get used to it. And God bless you and congratulations.
It has been a tremendous blessing to work here and to have the opportunity to work for Councilmember Rosendahl and to work so closely with our chief of staff, Mike Bonner. It has been an honor and a privilege to be here and I just wanted to thank not only all the council members and all of the staff here in City Hall, but specifically the council audio and Channel 35 and all the reporters and all the cameramen and women I've worked so closely with over the last two and a half years. They are dedicated employees and I truly appreciate all of their hard work and their partnership with me. I will always remember this time in my life, it's been a wonderful experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much and we hope to see you back here not too, too long from now. And with that, if I can ask everybody to please rise for our adjourning motions. Oh, and we will grant those two earlier excuses since it takes us down to 11, not 10. And we'll first recognize Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I know this gentleman was a friend of many of ours and shocked us all when Jorge Jackson passed away January 1st due to lung and heart failure. He was a senior consultant with the California Emergency Technology Fund. He worked to help put together a strategic action plan and participated in much of the fund's planning, including the broadband best practice summit. Prior to his career as a consultant, he was appointed by Governor Gray Davis in August of 2000 to serve as Deputy Secretary for Business Regulation under the state's Business Transportation Housing Agency. And prior to that, he served as the California, Director of California's 2000 Census Complete Count Campaign that resulted in a lower undercount population than anticipated. He also served on the Board of Directors for the Alliance for Better Communities and prior to joining the Davis administration, he served in numerous positions, public affairs positions with GTE and now Verizon. And his last assignment there was that of international public affairs, a job that took him to Puerto Rico and other Central and South American countries where GTE had operations. And they've not yet designated a place for donations and are planning a community, probably a memorial service but celebration of Jorge's life. Jorge was one of those individuals that was everywhere involved in the community. I met him when he was at GTE. He was that smiling face, had a good sense of humor, a great, great individual and just shocked to hear him pass away. He was just, I think, 52 years old and it was very, very sudden. And so our heart goes out to his entire family. I knew his, I know his brother, Carlos Jackson, and then even though he works for the county, and his entire family. And so Jorge will be missed by many of us and was just an extraordinary part of the fabric of Los Angeles and its culture and most of all was a good friend to many of us on a variety of levels.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy, for bringing forth this recognition of such a wonderful human being. He truly was a servant. When he worked for Verizon, which is a private company, he was equally or perhaps more involved in the community than maybe he was doing on his regular job. But the fact of the matter is Verizon benefited from his philanthropic personality and his givingness and the community did as well. I just met with Jorge in my office about a month ago and his energy was infectious. He would always be thinking on his feet, he was always encouraging us to do more and do better because there's always so much that needs to be done for the community and we're going to miss him very much. And my prayers go out to the Jackson family, they're very involved in the community of Los Angeles and beyond and they're very giving individuals and they just lost one of their beloved brothers and someone who was loved by the community, someone who deserves much more recognition by the people he's affected even though they've never met him. And I'm sure a lot of what Jorge has done is going to live on for many, many, many generations because he was the kind of person who was a leader, he was a fighter, he was an innovator and he was someone who just gave 110% in whatever he did. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also want to send my condolences to the Jackson family. One of his brothers worked at LAUSD who I got to know very well and I got to know Jorge mostly through his work with the Alliance for Better Communities, a group that was dedicated to working to improve student achievement at LAUSD. And what Wendy and Tony said is correct, this gentleman gave a lot of himself to better the community. the community, and this type of person, and you just love to see, he comes to you with a bright, big smile and really sincere, lovable, great person, and I'm certainly going to miss him. And I think all of us here in Los Angeles and the school district are happy that Jorge touched us in the way he did to improve the lives of all of us.
Thank you. Mr. Parks, Mr. Lebon.
Thank you. Members, I ask for you to adjourn in memory of Frank Capra Jr., the son of the legendary Frank Capra, a very talented individual who rose through the ranks to become the movie producer and also head of president of Screen Gems. He survived by his wife Deborah, his son Jonathan Frank III, and daughter Christine. Also, members, I ask for you to adjourn in memory of Stu Nahan, who was a great sports newscaster and just a fun person to be around. Mr. Garcetti and I did a star for Stu this year out on Hollywood Boulevard, a wonderful guy who really started in ice skating in Canada and came this way and was able to have such a personality to be one of the great reporters of sports in all of Southern California, starting at Eyewitness News and over to NBC, then to KTLA. Survived by his wife Sandy, daughter Kathleen, sons Mick and KC. Finally, I'd ask to adjourn in memory of one of the great photographers, Roger Marsholtsen, who was a great stillman who captured everybody from Marilyn Monroe to Elvis Presley. He survived by his son, two sons and one daughter, and his wife Nancy, Roger Marsholtsen.
Thank you. I will do all members on that second one. Mr. Nahan, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Lionel Perry, who was the father of Pamela Finley, who's employed in the mayor's office. He was born in Lake Charles, Louisiana, in July 1928. Kind of unique, he joined the U.S. Navy at the age of 15 during World War II and served in World War II with his two brothers. He's returned from service, married in 1948. After 35 years in the mail-order business, he moved to Vegas. Devout Catholic, attended the Our Lady of Las Vegas Church. Amongst his friends and family, he's known as Uncle Pops. He loved living in Vegas because of the sunshine, the Broadway musicals, and he loved talking about the Lakers. Survived by five children, 10 grandchildren, and nine great-grandchildren. He was interned November the 29 locally at the Holy Cross Cemetery on Slauson.
And I got to second that, too. Pamela Finley is one of the great members of the mayor's team and a wonderful person, and I could see how she got her love with her father.
Thank you. And the other one, I'd ask us to adjourn in memory of Jeremy Dannen Solomon, who was murdered at Jesse Owens Park Wednesday, December 26. He was born on May 1987 in Carson and was an active member of the Crenshaw Christian Center where he attended school and also the churches. He attended West LA College, was an aspiring artist, computer graphic cartoons, and his major life goal was to go into that industry. Graduated from South Bay Lutheran High School in 2005, and he helped paint the South Bay Lutheran High School mural and also one at West Los Angeles. He survived by his parents, two sisters, one brother. His services were January the 4 at Crenshaw Christian Center at 10:00 a.m. This young man was merely at the Jesse Owens Park to go to a art program, and it was his first visit, and he was killed at that time, just the day after Christmas.
Do all members on that as well. Mr. Zine.
Mr. President, I have two. Eileen Bushman passed away January 6, born in Chicago, raised in Los Angeles, resident of West Hills, lived in the West Valley for over 50 years, loved shopping and fashion, a member of the Red Hat Society for over four years, friendly, kind, and outgoing person with many friends, be greatly missed by all her family and friends. Survived by her daughter Cheryl Aldridge and Hudson Scott, son Michael, his wife Stacy, son Robert Bushman, and wife Joanie, sister Deanna Morse, her brother Richard Christ, seven grandchildren, and many friends. Eileen Bushman, may she rest in peace. And the other adjourned motion, Robert Meyer passed away December 31, Los Angeles businessman who sold women's and men's accessories and cosmetics at Bullock's, Clark Truck, and Knott's Berry Farm, among many other stores, in the area of the big department stores. He exhibited products at trade shows held at the Biltmore Hotel in downtown Los Angeles is where he married his wife over 52 years ago, one of the first jobs was selling women's shoes at Bullock's. Was a resident of Sherman Oaks, passed away December 31 at the age of 81, be greatly missed by his family and friends. Survived by his wife Sarah, daughter-in-law, son-in-law, daughter and son-in-law, Marlene and Michael Turner, son and daughter-in-law, Mark and Deanna Meyer, and two grandchildren. Robert Meyer, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. And finally, colleagues, I ask you to adjourn in memory of the father of an old, dear friend of mine, Matthew Kidd, whose father was the late, great Michael Kidd. He passed away at the age of 92, and for dance, he was probably the equivalent of what Steven Spielberg is for film. He was one of the geniuses of the American movie musical. He invented the defining moments in a score of movies. Trained as a ballet dancer, the son of immigrants fleeing the pogroms, they settled in Brooklyn. He was known as Milton Greenwald when he was first born and started as an engineering student at City College there in New York. But he said, "It was too impersonal, so I drifted to dance." He joined the American Ballet and Ballet Caravan and was a dancer, a principal dancer at the American Ballet Theater from 1942 to 1947. Always known in the Catskills where he danced as well as the Kid. He changed his name to Michael Kidd. And his defining moments, he was somebody who CV was the envy of all dancers, but in a way that they had great respect for, somebody who directed, who acted, who danced. Just listen to a few of the movies he choreographed. Seven Brides for Seven Brothers, Guys and Dolls, It's Always Fair Weather, where Gene Kelly, who always did his own dancing, it was the one time that he actually let a choreographer tell him how to dance. In 1947, he started his career on Broadway when he decided he wanted to choreograph an American art form known as the American musical. And Phineas Rainbow, the original Guys and Dolls, Little Abner, Dusty Rides Again, and then a movie, The Bandwagon. Fred Astaire, who was also somebody who never let a choreographer tell him how to dance, was directed by him as well. He directed a number of movies. He starred in them. He directed TV shows, All in the Family, Laverne and Shirley. He starred in It's Always Fair Weather. And he is survived by his wonderful wife Sheila, two daughters from a previous marriage, and his daughter and my son, sorry, his son, my friend, Michael. What an amazing contribution he made to America, to all of our happiness, and to the great American genre of the musical. May Michael Kidd rest in peace. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. And with that...